This Friday, we've been averaging about 7-8 hours of development. Before, we were running 24 hours per day. For 3 days a week, for other days for 20 hours a day. So now we're back to the normal routine. So we're in good shape. So that's, there's nothing to act on, I'm just reporting the council, we're gonna roll it back. We'll change some.
I think that's a good plan. The new ordinance, temperatures are breaking a little bit because of the rain. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Next up, we have a consideration ordinance adopting the 2018 property tax rate. As I stated before, we've had 3 public areas on the property tax. Any questions on the property tax? Motion by anybody who can think of it.
A motion to approve the current property tax. How is that?
To the ordinance?
The ordinance.
Motion to approve the ordinance for proposed property tax.
Okay. Have a motion?
A second.
Could seconds it? All those in favor? All those who got a hand tied up? Okay.
I'll.
All in favor? Everybody? Oh, so the tax codes roll?
Mayor Chris Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Bishop.
Yes.
Councilwoman Shields?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shields?
Yes.
Councilman Watts?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next up, we have ratification ordinance 1802 to adopt the fiscal tax to 1819 budgets. Again, this is standard for the county council. There's 2 steps to do it, first you adopt it, then the next one, come out and say, yeah, we really meant multiple taxes. So we could say, it's a roll call thing. It's a roll call vote for the ratification of the budget to be adopted.
If you were not present at the last meeting.
You have a choice, either say yes, or you're standing or you're taking. Yeah, all.
Stop the motion, is that right?
I'm sorry?
You stopped the motion this morning?
Yes.
Okay. My motion approved ordinance 1802 for fiscal year 1819 budget.
Mayor Chris Henry?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bishop?
Yes.
Councilwoman Leslie?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shields?
Standing.
Councilman Watts?
Yes.
All right. My next up, Department of Public Services' rate proposal. All right, so what we're looking at, what we're looking at is, we have a 5-year renewal. We're looking at doing it with Public slash Allied. And one of the things I asked Linda to look into, and Linda's done most of the legwork on this particular issue, is to, is to look at Allied and say, look, you know, a lot of the garbage companies, they do annual rate increases. Rate changes every single year. Well, for us, we've been very good with Allied, that either they have tried to do the rate increase and we've kind of convinced them not to, or we've just eaten them. So the last time we had Allied, the last one we did in 2010, the rate was $16.25. The current rate is $16.98. So in 8 years, almost 9 years, it's only gone up about 5%. And a lot of that is because of the one rate increases, basically twisted their argument, convinced them not to. Well, unfortunately now, as we all know, it's a different situation. The economy's turned around. They legitimately come to us and said, look, we want to do a renewal, we'd like free renew, and the rates have to go up. We've got to get back to normal. We basically are at a half a percent a year. You know, they haven't changed it. So I asked them, give me some options, because I don't like going in and changing the utility bill. I don't want to go in there every year and have to just go in and reprogram it and change it. I prefer if we lock things down and then we don't have to do it again. Lock them down and move on. We've got other stuff we've got to do. We've got to deal with wells and potentially new concrete roads and redevelopment, and there's lots of stuff coming down the pike at us. And let's just lock and load and get these things out of the way. And that was kind of the mandate to, with Linda, to go off and find out what we can do. So there was a really nice conversation with Allied. They came in and showed us all the data, they showed us some charts. And as, I don't know how much the council was aware of what's happened in the past, but the recycling side of the house has flipped its sign. So it used to be recycling was a net gain to the garbage company, they'd sell it. It's flipped, it's now a negative number. It costs more to recycle than the revenue they're getting. Because they cannot send the paper overseas anymore. They used to be able to send the paper overseas to Asia and they would get, you know, some number, let's say, you know, $200 a ton. Now the number's like $5. And it's got a 99% pure. They basically won't take it. So the recycling side of the house of all the garbage companies across the land has crashed. And what they're doing with a lot of cities is they're flat-out charging them to do recycling. It's no longer money, you're having to pay to have them recycle their stuff. That's, that's why it is. That is the current state of the way the world is. The recycling has turned around. So, and they came, and I know, I know they're not making, I know that's a fact, because I've read it in the Wall Street Journal, and it's real. Especially the paper rates have crashed, all that recycled paper. So a lot of garbage companies right now are renegotiating and they're making the cities pay for recycling. You've got to pay for it on top of the garbage. And I instructed them not to do that here. We're not going to, just, I want one rate, I want it simple, what's the garbage rate? Give us the rate. I don't want to have 17 parameters and dials to throw. What's the rate? And so, they told us that the rate would start at 2050, which would be our new rate. So right now it's 1750, it would go to 2050. And again, that's, I think that's reasonable after not moving it basically for 8 years. And then the choice becomes, how do we want to structure it after that? So they came up with several of these options. So option number 1 is, let's see, option number 1 is, there's basically a 3% annual increase every year. You can do that. Option 2 was, the rate's good for 1 year, and then in year 2, it switches and stays good for 2 years, then it switches again in the last 2 years. So it's a 1-2-2 scenario. And that would be, 5% would be the 2 raises. So it's 1-2-2. And the other one is 3 and 5, so basically it's 2 and 2. These are different parameters, right? And then the one is, I made them say, give me a number to fix it for 5 years straight. Lock it for 5 years, no annual changes. And that's the 2177. The idea tonight is, there are no ordinance in front of you, it just, they want to know what do we want, so that they can draft the ordinance, I'm sorry, they can draft the contract. So the other part of this is, as a way to kind of save some money, kind of rearrange things for us, I asked them if they could rearrange it so that we do bulk quarterly. So there's 2 advantages to that. One, let's only trash the city 4 times a year. Second, we can get it off the every other month, which is our holiday schedule. The damn thing seems to be right around every holiday, right? It's New Years, it's July 4th, it's Halloween, it's Labor Day. The odd months are the weekends right before our Monday holidays. And we trash the place. So they agreed, it'd be much better for them if we did it quarterly, because then what they could do for us is, they would guarantee, like, let's say we did it on, you know, April 15th. Not on the, but Saturday, April 15th. They could guarantee to us that they would have roll-offs here. So they would literally go into town, grab the stuff, drop it, start picking up again, have them drive it away. They would have like a shuttle system, so they could bulk the whole town in 1 day. Guaranteed to do it 1 day and we're out of here.
Would it be the same limitation on a mound?
Exactly, the same limitations for us, say 10 yards. But it would be more streamlined. And to me, that's the way to go. I mean, 4 times a year is a lot. I mean, 4 times is good enough. You've got to bulk trash. I mean, every other month is a little much, I think. So that was a way to try and save some cost. I did ask them if they would entertain, once a year, having something like, you can bring us your paint cans, bring us your tires, have a collection of whatever, you know, your electronics, television sets, yeah, like, one of those things that you, if you stick it out in bulk trash, they ain't picking it up. And I can't give you the exact phrasing, but the words from them was, pretty much, they don't want to do that. And we, if you ask us to price it, you're like, you're not gonna get the price. Basically, it was pretty easy. They don't want, they don't want us to do that. But we'll see, I still want to do something like that.
So these 4 options, if you just do the math on them, is, you know, one of them is, are they all the same price? Is one cheaper than the other?
Well, I mean, basically what, at the end of the day, it's almost, you know, they're gonna get the same amount of money almost, right? It's literally like, you know, you can pay your mortgage once a week, you can pay your mortgage once a month, every other one. At the end of the day, you're paying off the same mortgage.
So these 4 options work out over the 5 years, being the same?
To them, they've done their math to say, you know, look, 3% a year, we get this much money from Lakewood Village. If we do it 5% twice over the 5 years, we'll get that much money. They don't care.
Well, what we're paying in is, if I live here 5 more years, I'm gonna pay in the same amount no matter what option.
It's not, I didn't want to add that, but essentially, it should be for them. There's a little bit of a break, like, you know, if you do, if you do 5% after 2 years, that's not the same as 3% a year. There's a little bit of math involved, because, you know, it's almost like, you know, if on average, like, an average 2177, well, over the 5 years, that's a fixed number. Which means, conceptually, you'd probably be overpaying in the first year.
Right.
But you'd be underpaying in the last year, and, you know, because, now it's 2050.
Yeah, I realize the year.
So the math is all the same.
Is this for the new quarterly?
It's fuzzy math.
Yes, this is all with the new quarterly. And the idea being that for us administratively, we try and do things to make it easier for us, because we don't usually adjust our rates a lot. We keep the rates barriers fixed for long periods of time. That's why, you know, even though it's been 8 years, we've changed the garbage price once in 8 years. Because it actually went up, I think, 4 times, and we ate it twice. We didn't even pass them on, we said, forget it, it's too small, we're not even bothered changing the customer's number by, you know, 15 cents. So on this side, yeah, I mean, is there any, does anybody have any?
You know, it's one of those, if you, you know, small increments, if you increase a little bit every year, it's palatable, but then every year, you know, psychologically, it goes up every year. So I kind of like either options where it's, you know, adjusted every 2 years or every 3 years. I kind of like 2, option 2 really, but.
Yeah, I didn't like.
I recognize it's got an increase, right, they're costing degrees.
The one with the fixed price, they kind of, they didn't do what I wanted, because it's fixed, unless we have to change it.
Put, you know, conditional NIP on it.
That's not fixed. You can pass along an increase in the middle, that's not what we want.
I think for me, option 2 or 3, whatever is easier administratively.
Now, the way to read that, by the way, is, well, it says like year 2 and 4, it'd be at the start of year 2. That's the way that they interpret that, so. What do you think, Liz?
I'm trying to do the math.
Yeah. I mean, the way the contract reads is they are, you know, there's always an app for them, if there's some, you know, some big issue happens, if the landfill does something. But with us, they've been very good about not nickel and dime this. They've been very good to us about, like I said, really not doing that, and thus holding the line. Because remember, if you change the garbage, we've got to change, the sales tax changes too. And the extra can changes. So every time we change it, we got it back in the menu and we change.
Yeah, it's basically that if statement in option 4, because you could just set it once for 5 years.
I know, I would love to have done that. They killed me by putting that in there. Then that's not really fixed.
Yeah, because that would have been like 4.6% increase over 10 years. That would be higher.
Yeah, so we, you know, like I said, we, they've been very good to us. Now, I will tell you that, for instance, in Little Allen, they adopt a 5-year schedule where there's annual increases each year. They do these every 5 years. So they lock and load 5 years for water bills, sewer bills. They do these 5-year plans, and lock and load everything in. We really haven't been doing that. But this is kind of our first foray into trying to lock something in for years on the rate. Every contract we ever have for them, every contract we've had, says they can come back annually for a CPI increase on the garbage CPI index, annually. They've done it twice in 8 years, because we've told them, don't bother, it's too small.
They accepted that?
They accepted that, yes. So.
When you say too small, is that penny, nickel?
Pennies, it's, you know, like, we're gonna raise it, you know, 10 cents. Well, sometimes they, they write, they say, we're gonna do that, and they don't. Just don't do it. They get back to their side and don't do it.
What else you looking for?
I'm looking for direction, so here's what's gonna happen. We're going to draft the contract now and put a note in.
We need a decision tonight, or can we?
Well, these numbers aren't gonna change, and I'm gonna play with it. So it sounds like we can scratch option 4, unless, then they give us some other guidance to cap it, or have some sort of a, some.
I think the takeaway is option 1 and option 4. I don't think, is anybody entertaining an increase every year?
So we're looking at 2 or 3.
Whatever works out to our advantage and administratively works out for our engine office.
Okay, so we'll do that, and then the contract will come back to you. So next month, you'll see the full contract, with everything.
There are definitely one quarter rate.
Quarterly bulk, I think is the way to go. The nice thing about quarterly is, we can pick the dates.
Yeah, I think the way this reads is, you pick an option and you get quarter bulk service.
Okay? All right, thank you. All right, next up is a contract with Saco and Burrows for property tax collection. Okay, so now we're gonna have a series of ordinances in a row. So let me just preface this by saying, you know, there's a lot of them that we're gonna have banging away here in a row. So where the issues that's come up, or where this is coming from, is that under the local government code, if you look at section 22, it says powers and duties of the mayor. So this is the duties of the mayor. And it says, under section C, the mayor shall, shall, give to the governing body any information and shall recommend to the governing body any measure that relates to improving the finances, security, or the good government of the municipality. So as basically the chief operating officer operating the town, it's my responsibility, so shall, I shall do it, to bring to the council things that need tweaking, things that, where we've had some operational issues, things that need clarity, just some on the margin, we've got experience now, this isn't working quite the way we thought, we need to make some adjustments. And so that's what this represents, this kind of laundry list of ordinances where I'm recommending that we make some adjustments based upon what's happened since the ordinance is written. Everybody should have gotten a memo for every one, they should have had red lines on all of them. I'm not gonna go through individual red lines. But let's, let's go. So the first one up is Saco and Burrows for tax collection. We've had this for many years. Talking with Mark, and we know we had a, we had to spend time last time in July about delinquencies. Mark's suggestion to us was that we make it more transparent and just put it on autopilot. A lot of cities do that, some cities do the other thing. Some cities want to know specifically who's delinquent, and they want to take action themselves. It cuts both ways. I think it's better for us to stay out of it. As the council, just stay out of it and put it on autopilot and let Mark do what he does best. These are his recommendations for the triggers. This is what other cities that have triggers have recommended, you know, whether it's financially a lot of money, whether it is somebody that's very, very behind, and/or somebody that has a lot of properties, that way it's more efficient to go after 1 person if you can clear 10 accounts. And this is what other cities have done, so. Any questions? You look like you were gonna say something.
Yeah, is this the person we talked to last time?
We had Saco, I can't remember how long, I think, for as long as I can recall, way back when.
Yeah, these directors are basically kicking in, because there is a certain amount owed, and if it goes over a threshold, then it becomes a good thing for us to let them just go get it, right?
That's right. I mean, it's automated, so that, you know, under the tax code, they want you to be as fair as you can.
Yeah, so we don't have to meet and say, should we go after this guy?
Well, you know, let's, let's give Linda a pass, but, you know, let's go after Danny. You know, let's, you know, let's do this, but not her, right? We don't want to play that game. So a lot of city councils don't even want to, they don't want to know. They just turn it over.
Yeah, there should be a rule that says, we hit this point, then we go. It seems to make sense.
What I learned about the auto triggers, we're such a small town, we know our neighbors. Takes it out of the hands, it's between you and your community and the third party to collect damage.
I believe that the conversation that we had with him, it seems that they're pretty fair. I mean, they have conversations with the homeowner, and they try to resolve it before going to the next step.
They were more lenient than I thought, yeah.
This is a lot.
Yeah, I like the IRS. Like the hammer down.
Were these his 3? He listed these 3?
Yeah. Well, I mean, when I talked to him, he said, these are the typical triggers that other cities do. And he said, you know, he said it in generic terms, you know, the dollar amount, the length of time, and, and, you know, efficiency.
My only question would have been number 3, the mini-protection, is that like 2 properties or is that 10 properties? You know, like, I know someone probably doesn't own 10, but.
Well, I mean, for, you know, for him, it just was a conceptual thing that, you know, for efficiency, right? Because 1 tax year, consolidate 20 properties in 1, because, let's say it's landfill. And they've gone belly up and they've got 20 lots out there they still own, you know, all the delinquents.
I think the mini-protection is more of a developer or land speculator, right? It's not necessarily homeowner, that's 3-year lower houses.
Yeah, we've never had that here.
More likely people that own land throughout county.
And it was an efficiency play, that, you know.
Right, and to Linda's point, he is very fair, right? He starts with a letter in conversation, it doesn't start with, we're going to court.
Right, it's July 15th is the trigger date, it's 6 months late, so. Ed, did you have something to say?
No, I'm done.
All right?
I agree.
You're good? All right, so what we're looking at is, is in the motion to authorize me to execute the contract with Saco and Burrows.
Can I make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute this contract with Saco and Burrows?
Okay. Okay. A motion and a second, all those in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, next up is consideration of the certificate of occupancy ordinance. All right, so very briefly, the CO ordinance has been tremendously successful for Lakewood Village. We imposed this thing about 10 years ago, where we actually went and did inspections. It's been very, very good for us. There were some situations which are horribly dangerous that we went out and catch. One of the, one of the issues that's come up operationally at the time is, we don't have such a thing as a temporary CO. It's not in the ordinance, never was. But we had to create it out of necessity. Whereas, let's say, for example, Linda's new to the town, she shows up on Friday and says, oh my gosh, you know, I'm new, I need a CO, so I just bought the house on Hillside. And we said, oh, okay, well, Steve, we'll run out there and do it tonight, we'll get it done, blah, blah, blah. And you don't have a smoke detector outside your bedroom. You're failing. Well, your movers are coming tomorrow. How do we tell you, you can't move in your house because you're missing a smoke detector? Technically speaking, you didn't pass. You were stuck. Look, just go buy a smoke detector, put it on, take a picture, but Steve can't come back till Monday. Or, you know, so we have situations where it's clearly not a problem. We need to have some flexibility, but the ordinance gave us none. The house is either safe, or it's unsafe. And if it's unsafe, you can't occupy it, you can't put furniture in, you can't do anything. So we created some flexibility in his house. But then we have people who are doing remodeling, who come in and ask us, I can't get power in the house, unless you do a CO, but I'm gonna rip the power out to redo the house, it's chicken and egg. And we allow them then, a temporary CO. The power company gives them power, but there's a drawback. Once you have power, the power company can't take it away. The only power company can disconnect the power is if you don't pay your bill. So if you tell us, we're not gonna do, we're not gonna do the CO, we can't turn the power off. We've lost our leverage. So we've had problems with some of these remodels where they don't obey CO. We had one guy years ago move in the house. He was gonna tear it down, so we gave him until he cut it to tear it down. 2 months later, where, where are you? Well, he's living in it. He decided not to tear it down, he's gonna live in it. Well, it didn't have a CO, it didn't. So this has caused a problem. So the solution that I'm proposing is, we actually put in the ordinance, we can do a temporary CO. If it's longer than 7 days, then you gotta have skin in the game. Because if it's longer than 7 days, then you're gonna put up basically like a bond. You're gonna put up $1,000, then if you finish in the 30 days, or, you know, if the building inspector did some extension because you're working, that's fine. But if you follow what we say, and you do what the agreement says, you get your money back. We don't want your money. But, you know, we just had it twice, right, and shut people off, turn the meters off. And they got very angry at Lakewood Village, because we turned them off, because they didn't follow the temp CO. We had an agreement with them, they violated the agreement, and then they got mad at us, because they violated the agreement. So we've got to fix it. This is again, an issue that's come up, and so this was the, kind of the solution that I proposed. Steve's okay with it, obviously, the building inspector has the authority. It's his call. If it's unsafe, you don't get a CO, you don't get nothing, if he says it's a, you know, unsafe condition. So are any questions?
I have a question about the 7 days. So if it is a remodel and it's longer than 7 days, you're saying they have to give the bond? If it's only gonna be longer than 7 days, if it's not, then it doesn't matter?
Correct.
And then is there a time limit after that?
I didn't want to get too, because the idea is to give us the flexibility that this ordinance didn't give us. So if you were doing a West Willard remodel, it was enormous, then you still put up the bond, but as long as you were making progress and, you know, you were reasonable people. It's the people that get the temp CO and don't do anything. They just, they have power. Now, once they, once you have power and you have water and you have sewer, you're good to go. Well, you know, and now the gutting of the house is kind of at your own pace. You don't really have any, and these jobs could take forever, because you have no more incentive, other than just... And that's what's hurting us, is we didn't have the way to, once it's on, we couldn't get Coastal to turn it back off. Now, one of the nice things about the way I wrote it is, you know, look, if you don't want to put up the $1,000 and have the notarized agreement which says what you're gonna do, if you don't want to do that, you don't have to. But go buy a generator and bring in your water. We had somebody do that. They bought gas generators, and they brought in a water truck. And that's what they did. Fair enough. We're not giving you water and sewer, and you're not getting electricity from Coastal, till you have a CO. Okay?
So what I like about this is it still kind of insulates the council a little bit, and allows a homeowner to appeal to council, so it's done through the building officials, I like that. The 7 days is kind of nice, it's, right, you don't have to do it every time. Kind of a serenity, you know, the open end of this, but, you know, if they don't want their money back, and we're still having to release the power and release the water, so I think in open ended, we're probably okay. And if not, we can, I mean, we're continuously, right, we kind of have, have nothing, and so now maybe just get out of this work.
And, I mean, the intent is to give them their money back. It's not to raise money, this is just...
think in open ended, we're probably okay. And if not, we can revisit. I mean, we're continuously improved, right? We kind of have, had nothing, and so now maybe it's, it's worked.
And, and the way, the intent is to give them their money back. It's not to raise money. This is just to give people the incentive.
To do the thing right.
But you said you were going to.
But I hope that budget line has a zero in it at the end of the year, that we don't ever have to use that money.
Yeah, as, as we play this out, there's a couple triggers, right? We put an end date on it, we raise the bond, you know, so, $1,000, you know, on a big remodel, that's not a lot, but it's also, it's a, maybe important, good detector input. And this has been, I think, on council, it comes up maybe two or three times a year since I've been on council. So, I mean, this is, this is time that needs to be addressed.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay. All right.
A motion to approve the changes, red line changes noted in the CO CSI inspection order.
We're going to approve this one, right?
Yeah, it doesn't have an assigned number. We, we have a reserve in, it's a public file or something like that.
Okay, so, all right. All right, I have a motion to approve the ordinance. Second?
Second.
So, we need a second, all those in favor? Thank you. All right, next up is, again, consideration of the junk vehicles and parking ordinance. This is, again, based on our, our history that we're running into here from the operations side. The junk car stuff is governed by state law, so there's, there's 15 pages of junk car, and towing a car in Texas requires pretty much an act of congress. Towing a car is really hard, and somebody's property. So, the first 15 pages of this thing are spied out of state law, and they are the original ordinance, that's not changed. The only thing that changed is, many years ago, we had a debate about what was an improved surface. Because people wanted to park boats and trailers and all sorts of stuff, and Harold Lindis on the council, when Harold had some sheds and he had stuff, and, so we debated about, "Look, fair's fair, you can't just jam with your backyard. You've got to put it on something." We don't have an HOA, so the latter can park stuff, but let's meet us halfway. Park it on something that's decent, you can park whatever you want. That's kind of the, the debate we had back in 2009. The question was, what we did is, we weren't sure what we wanted on the surface, so we left it a little bit vague, to find out what people actually would do, and then go back later and find out, "Well, that's really not." Now that we've seen the, kind of the implementation, how people are doing it, now we have a better idea about what we really see and what we don't want. People got really clever when the price of concrete was high, and we had all sorts of